Good evening. I should like to call this regular meeting of the Fairfield City Council to order, please. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mike? Good evening.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bertani?
Here.
Councilmember Moy?
Here.
Councilmember Panduro?
Here.
Councilmember Tim?
Here.
Councilmember Tonison?
Here.
Vice Mayor Vicaro?
Here.
And Mayor Price?
Here.
Thank you.
We have a full quorum tonight. The invocation this evening will be led by Worship Pastor Karen Freeman from Grace Episcopal Church. Pastor, thank you very much for being with us this evening.
Especially for any who are in special need of shelter, food, or health care services, that they will be guided to existing resources where they may be found and given a voice where resources need to be developed. Thank you for the freedom that we have and for the gifts you have given us: wisdom, creativity, and the ability to communicate with each other. For this meeting, we ask that those gifts are in abundance, that decisions would be made with wisdom, that creative solutions be discovered to make life better for residents and visitors of Fairfield and its environment, and to govern effectively. We ask your blessing on our mayor and on our city officials and all leaders of our community, especially those gathered here this evening. May we serve with humility, compassion, and courage. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Councilman Tim, would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We turn now to council reports, please. Mr. Vice Mayor, would you like to begin?
(Inaudible)
Darice, the Vice Mayor, would like you to begin, please.
Sounds good to me. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this evening's council meeting. I just wanted to first thank -- we just had some amazing Mexican fócorico dancing in the lobby, so I just want to give a shout out to Grupo Fócorico Jovenil de Santos Unidos of Aqueville. And so they are a group out of Aqueville, but the really neat part is, is that one of their teachers -- their teacher is one of our staff members, and also I have known a lot of those young people since they were in elementary school. So it's been really neat watching them grow up and learn through dance and then having them perform here this evening. And the other thing I want to just touch on real quick is, I just want to congratulate Toro University on their 25th anniversary. I know they are not in Fairfield, but they do a lot of work in Fairfield and all over Solano County. They do a lot of great impactful work, and we'll hear a little bit more about them later this evening. So, and that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tonison, your report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is not going to be easy for me tonight. I've heard some disparaging remarks that were made about the entire council by Councilmember Moy, and I would like to look into a censure. If somebody could give me a second on that. Mr. City Attorney, do I have to explain what I heard, or...
That's at your discretion.
So, I was told by a union member that Kat was in a room, and she was asked who on the council endorsed her. And Kat said that they're all corrupt. That's the information I received. So I'd like to look into that more if I could get a second for a censure.
And Councilmember Tonison, I want to clarify, are you...
Agendize. Just to agendize.
To agendize, putting on the procedure for a motion for...
Correct.
Okay.
Catherine, are those comments accurate?
No, they are not.
Do we have a second?
Obviously, I think this caught a lot of us unaware. You say it didn't happen. Kat, pardon me. I'm just -- you say it didn't happen, he says it happened.
(Inaudible)
Okay. I don't know, but I would like to know the answer.
(Inaudible)
So, well, I understand what Councilmember Tonison just said and what you just said. How do we get to the bottom of this if we don't agendize a censure? How does that happen? I don't think that it does. And I think it's important that... We just spent -- we were in closed session. We need to know the facts, and if the facts can only be determined through a censure, then I will second it. But I want to know. Were you lied to? Are you telling the truth? And if that's the case, then I will be the first one to say, "This didn't happen." If it did happen, then we'll go from there. So, that's my feeling on it.
You second that motion?
I do.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Can, Mr. City Attorney, can you explain the censure process and what it means? Is there an investigative aspect to that process for the sake of my information and for the people watching? What does that mean?
So, it's a good question, Councilmember Bertani. There is no legal authority in the government code for a general law city to govern censures. However, it's well settled in government procedure. Many cities in the state of California have procedures to allow members of the elected body to censure another member of their body. Now, I will be honest, I haven't yet done the research. So my understanding is that Councilmember Tonison has asked to agendize the consideration of a censure, not the actual bringing of a censure, because currently, the city of Fairfield, under their policies, does not have a procedure for censure. So what would first have to happen is, you would either have to create a policy for censure, or I would do some research as to whether what would happen if council just brought a motion and a second for censure without it being under policy or under law. So I'll bring that report back and bring it whenever... Now, having had two of you bring that item and ask the city to do it, I'm assuming the city manager will place it on the agenda, and if that's the case, then I will work towards preparing a report as to how it all plays out. So the first step is going to be, what's the procedural posture? And then the second is up to the discretion of this council to determine whatever it is that you -- or whoever it is you want to censure and go about it, with whatever procedure you adopt. I hope that makes sense.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Moy, please.
Well, this is what corruption looks like. If it is to be, people, you know, decide that they don't like somebody, it's election time, they have plans, and this is part of that. It sounds like 7th grade... I mean, it's unbelievable. If I came up here every time I heard, and I heard some pretty awful things too, but that happens during campaigns, we're grownups. And I'm really quite shocked, because, I mean, I know what people have said through very serious sources, lawyers, so on, backstabbing. And that's what this is. And I want it to be clear. You know, they'll vote to do this, whether I did something or not, and this is -- should not be in... We shouldn't be talking about it here in the public. If I did something, if I went out and did something horrible, maybe, but I haven't. I work harder than anybody up here, every day, full-time. I think it's disgraceful. And that's what I'll say. And, you know, they'll go through the procedure, so it can be a headline. I will defend myself, and I'll tell you that if I have something to say, and I think Mr. Tonison knows that, I will say it to his face. That's who I am. I'm not a backstabber. This is a waste of public business. Voters will decide whether they want me, and up to now, they've decided that they want me more than anybody else, except for two people that I haven't run against yet. So, you know, I'm all about it. I respect if... I respect the process. If they decide for the first time, at least in 14 years, that they want to do something like this, that isn't even on the books here. It's never been done. That's what it means. And they're gonna, through hearsay, some union member who used to write bad things about me as a journalist, and then he turns around and does this kind of stuff? Are you kidding me right now? The credibility, I mean, put me under... It is... I'm really shocked. And I think you all would be, the public, would be more shocked when they hear more and more about what's going on here in this city. It's pretty foul. It's pretty foul. But I do respect them. They've all been elected here, and if they decide this is what they want to do, then they'll do it. Then they'll do it. And it should reflect on them. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Tim, your report, please.
No, I don't have a report. I just want to follow up to this. Kat, I don't know if, in fact, you did or didn't do it. You say you didn't. Councilwoman Tonison has said that this is what he's heard. I'm not out... Nobody's out to get you. And I think at the end of this, we're going to know, because it's going to be done in public, it's not going to be behind closed doors. And to your credit, you say you didn't do it, and, okay, we will find out. We will find out. And it's... This is very, very uncomfortable, because we don't always agree on things, obviously, and we do a lot of things behind closed doors. But obviously, Councilwoman Tonison had a reason to say what he said. So when it's agendized and when it comes back before our body, we'll find out, and you'll find out. So, and I don't know how long it will take. Mr. City Attorney, I suspect this won't take long, because, like Ms. Moy said, this is in the middle of an election season, and the quicker that we can put this to bed and find the truth, the better it will be for everybody involved, including the citizens.
So I'll take direction from that, from the city manager, and I guess he can follow up with the council. You know, this is not a new area of law. There are, like I said, many cities in California have censure policies, so it's not as if I'm going to have to do a lot of research, but there are certain things that I'm going to want to do, you know, for the city council, including, you know, go about the history of it, the different variations there are, whether, you know, the biggest question I'm going to have is whether you can apply it retroactively, because since there isn't a policy, the question is going to be, can you bring a censure against someone where there has not been a policy before? But cities, governing bodies are granted a great deal of deference, so I'm going to... So the research itself shouldn't take a lot of time. You know, just in the few minutes I've... This has come up, I've looked, and I've found no fewer than 10 examples of cities around California that have censure policies. So, as quick as you direct the city manager to have it heard back, we can get that done.
Okay. That's all I ask. Mayor, thank you, sir.
Councilwoman Vicaro, please.
Yeah, just to address this, you know, we've all heard bad things about each other in the past, there's no doubt about it. I think when it comes to campaign season, it's like, yeah, you know, we can ask people, "Hey, you know, I support this person, will you support this?" That happens. That's what campaign season's all about. But, yeah, the word corruption to me, that's why I think that it's not... I agree with Chuck, you know, let's just find out what's going on here, because that's a serious accusation, and I've heard that accusation before, and it's serious, because, look, you know, Kat, you say you work harder than everybody else. Okay, I would say, hey, I've done a lot in this city, and I've done a lot for the people in this city, and for the young people... Let me finish. And for the young people in the city and families that are underserved for years and years. So I take pride in that, and when I hear the word corruption among all of us, I'm like, "Are you kidding me? Corruption? Okay. What does that mean? Let's look it up in the dictionary, because I don't feel like that's me, and I don't feel like it's anybody else up here." So I think, yeah, let's look into it, but campaign season is what it is. It's campaign season, and some people call it the silly season. It is the silly season, but, but we have to respect each other's opinion, and if we don't agree with somebody or we support somebody else, that's the way it is. But, yeah, the term corruption is, to me, it's just so degrading to anybody, because I don't consider anybody up here corrupt, and I sure hope no one else does either. So that's my comment.
Councilwoman Moy? Councilwoman Bertani, please.
Thank you. And just to follow up on what the Vice Mayor said, I'm sitting up here, and my colleague says this is what corruption looks like, and I'm sitting here right next to her. I want to say in no uncertain terms that I take personal offense to anybody leveling an allegation of corruption against me, because it's unsupported, it's unfounded, it's uncorroborated, it's not true. I don't know, Catherine, if that's what you were doing, but I just want the record to be extremely clear, that there is no... I don't even know what kind of corruption could be applicable in this circumstance, but I take personal offense to that, Catherine. If you're saying that I'm corrupt, then I have a really big problem with that, and there is absolutely, unequivocally, beyond a doubt, no evidence to support anything like that with respect to my work in this city. And I think I give you a serious run for your money in terms of getting things done around here. So, all right, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Councilwoman Moy, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I want to say that this weekend, I was honored to represent us at an event of a young lady, a 17-year-old here in Fairfield, who was going to be representing the entire United States in Italy in World Games in karate. And she is really something. I've been following her for quite some time. She lives in the Green Valley area here, and it was a fundraiser, and it was just a really, really great time to see all the children and the young people who were there and working out, disciplined, all of those things. So it was fun, and I was honored to be there. I want to announce that this Saturday, Ball Metal, which is one of our... Well, it's not the oldest, but it's an older company here in town, where a lot of us have... Not me, but others have worked. And they're having the Ball Metal Annual Car Show and School Supply Drive. What's really cool about this, and they think about 1,000 people are going to be there, is that people... It's a car show, and so you have a car you want to show. Alls you have to do is bring some supplies for schoolchildren, and that's your entry into it. And there's going to be food, entertainment, and all kinds of fun. I think this is the eighth or ninth year, so that's really exciting. And that's going to start Saturday on 2400 Huntington Drive in Fairfield. It's the ninth annual. And for more information, you can go onto Facebook and look up the Ball Metal Annual Car Show, or you can contact me, and I'll get you some more. And then I wanted... I told the Women's Council of Realtors that I would also talk about their eighth annual Grape Escape Wine and Food Gala, and that's going to be September 16th. It's on a Friday, and it starts at 5:30 out on... It's going to be at the Wooden Valley Winery, which is awesome. And the money being raised is to benefit the Solano Advocates for Victims of Violence, and they give scholarships and so on. So those are the things that I wanted to report, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Bertani, please, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very quickly, I just want you to know that the Clergy Action Network is gearing up for the holidays. So we already have a subcommittee that will be planning our holiday meal that we're going to be hosting in the churches who are members of the Clergy Action Network, and their congregations will be helping to have a Thanksgiving meal, maybe not on Thanksgiving, we're still planning, we're still trying to tie down the date, but just know that that's happening and that we have our sites on Christmas as well. So the CAN, the Clergy Action Network, is gearing up. For all you senior pastors out there who are listening, our next meeting for the Clergy Action Network is Tuesday, the 27th, at 3:00 PM right here in council chambers. And we will have a robust conversation on that Tuesday afternoon about our holiday plans. And then the Clergy Action Network also is still planning the movie night, just a great family night to get out on the county lawn and watch a couple of movies together, bring the family, bring the kids, but you can't bring your pets, unfortunately, because that's the rules. But that's going to be on October 15th at dusk on the county lawn. And last thing I'll say is, I hope to see all of you at the Tomato &amp; Vine Festival this coming up weekend. Hopefully, the heat will be cooperative with us, it'll be conducive with us being outside. But Tomato &amp; Vine Festival this Saturday and Sunday, hope to see you there. And that's it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Vice Mayor, your report, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I see Brandon here from Shelter Inc. I want to thank him for opening up Shelter Inc. as a cooling center over the weekend. I know the weather was, still is, pretty unbearable. I know there's a lot of people out there really suffering, so thank you for doing that. Second, yeah, I attended Labor Day Breakfast yesterday down at Ironworkers, and, you know, it's great to see the celebration of all our hard-working union members down there. I know they do it every year, and yesterday was so hot, and they had it outside, but people kind of, you know, they sort of suffered, not suffered through it, but, you know, powered through it, and it was a great celebration of the working men and women in this country. So everybody just try to stay as cool as you can over the next few days. It's going to be tough. Thanks.
And I should like to report that last week, the city manager and I joined another group of folks from all over California, and we're concerned about what's happening with military installations in California, as well as licensure reciprocity. Long discussion about housing and how communities that do have, fortunate to have, military installations, should work together to make certain that there are houses that they can afford and that are decent, good places to live. The Travis Community Consortium is one of those organizations that was created in the city of Fairfield and throughout Solano County, and all the cities participate in that, and it's so critical for us to be much aware of what's happening around Travis Air Force Base, so that we don't allow any infringement upon that. And, Mr. City Manager, your report, sir.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I was going to bring up Tomato &amp; Vine, so thank you, Councilwoman Bertani. We will also have a car show component there, so for any of the gearheads here in Fairfield, you can go to Ball and come to the Tomato &amp; Vine Festival. And then the other thing, this, in our last water bill that went out, we actually had a flyer in there for identification or advertising our eviction assistance. So through the end of September, there are still funds that the city received in response to COVID-19 through the federal government, through the Community Development Block Grant. And so anybody interested could go to our website, fairfield.ca.gov/CDBG, or call Shelter Inc. at 925-349-0525 to find out if you're eligible for eviction assistance, rental assistance, or any other ways we might be able to help. So those funds run out at the end of September, so please, anybody that might be able to benefit from those funds, please do contact us. That's my report, Mayor.
Are there any changes to the agenda, Mr. City Manager?
No, sir.
Mr. City Attorney, your report, sir.
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, your report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank several adoptist street groups for their ongoing cleanups. Beth Self, she calls her team Team Self. Steve Edmondson and the Goldridge Neighbors, Randy Coons, Michael and Peggy Richardson, Frank Awon, and the Fairfield High School Junior ROTC. And he also had his group, the OLMC Knights of Columbus Adopt a Street as well. And of course, I can't forget Anna Patero and Ruth Clausen and crew. They're out there every week. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, if you would, presentation?
Yes, our presentation, Proclamation Declaring Hispanic Heritage Month, presented by Councilmember Darice Panduro. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to have Dr. Fatima Hernandez come up... Hernandez, sorry. And she is from Toro University. She is a pharmacist, project manager, and she oversees the Toro Care's mobile vaccination program. And the reason for this is, not only is it their 25th anniversary, but the theme for this National Hispanic Heritage Month is Unidos, Inclusivity for a Stronger Nation. And Dr. Hernandez has done such a fabulous job this entire pandemic. If you have been to any of our career fairs or resource fairs in the community, you have seen her there with her group, with her team of volunteers, that she trains herself to ensure that all the community has access to education and information to the vaccination. So she has done such an impactful work, and so I wanted just to honor her today for this month, when we're honoring and acknowledging and celebrating Latinos and Hispanics within our own community, within the state and the country. So I will read this proclamation. Whereas each year, Americans observe National Hispanic Heritage Month from September 15th through October 15th by celebrating the histories, cultures, and contributions of American citizens whose ancestors came from Spain, Mexico, the Caribbean, and Central and South America. And whereas the observation started in 1968 as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson, and was expanded by President Ronald Reagan in 1988 to cover the entire month. It was enacted into law on August 17th, 1988, on the approval of Public Law 100-402. And whereas September 15th is significant, because it is the anniversary of independence for Latin American countries, Costa Rica, El Salvador, Guatemala, Honduras, and Nicaragua. In addition, Mexico and Chile celebrate their Independence Days on September 16th and 18th, respectively. Whereas more than 15 million Hispanics live in the state of California, and more than 34,000 live here in Fairfield, representing 29% of the population. A diverse group with roots throughout Latin America and beyond, many Hispanic Californians trace their heritage to the original indigenous communities of Latin America and Africa. During National Hispanic Heritage Month, we honor and recognize all the Hispanics in the community who helped to build our state and city. They are teachers, business owners, council members, scientists, soldiers, farm workers, first responders, artists, activists, colleagues, and friends, and doctors. Hispanic Californians make available contributions to our neighborhoods, communities, and every sector of the economy. We are a more excellent and vibrant place because of them. Now, therefore, I, Heritage Price, Mayor of the city of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim September 15th through October 15th, 2022, as National Hispanic Heritage Month with the 2022 theme, Unidos. inclusivity for a stronger nation. And ask you to join me in recognizing and celebrating the diversity, rich culture, and countless contributions the Hispanics bring to Fairfield and the world at large.
Just one minute. Thank you so much. I'm not representing only myself today. I'm actually representing the more than 50% of people that we have vaccinated here in Fairfield. We want to continue doing that. Mr. Mayor, I have the pleasure to meet you before. And this is amazing for me. It's not just for me. It's actually for my family. I'm actually a COVID-19 survivor. I almost died. So this is actually something that is very emotive for me. And also for my family and my students. I couldn't have done it without them. They're actually the majority of my volunteers. And the rest of preceptors and Toro University, even the people that support us. And even the city and Fairfield, that we always have your support. So I really appreciate everyone. And please do not hesitate to reach out to me. I would love continuing doing education. I do believe the education is how we're going to end up all the problems that we have, including the pandemic. Thank you so much.
We turn now to public comments. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Yes, persons wishing to address the City Council on subjects not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the council may do so at this time. The council cannot discuss or take action on matters not on the agenda for this meeting, but council members may briefly respond to statements made or questions raised by the public, ask for clarification from staff, refer the matter to staff, request staff to report back to the council at a subsequent meeting, or place the matter on a future agenda. If you're online to speak on an agenda item, please use the Raise Your Hand feature or press star nine on your phone. And speakers are limited to three minutes per item. And our first speaker is George Kennedy.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I wanted to thank you again. It wasn't mentioned tonight by anybody, but on August 18th, we had a great turnout for the redo of the courts at Allenwood Park. We had a couple hundred people there. We had over 100 pickleball players. The tennis courts were all full. The pickleball courts were full until about, the lights went out at 9:00 at night. So it was an amazing event. Everybody was happy. We had people from all over the Bay Area come and support it. And then on the 25th, with Bill Way and Christina's help, we had Good Day Sacramento come down and do a couple of segments on pickleball in Fairfield and how we're the, we have the second-largest number of courts in Northern California now. So come out, play some pickleball, enjoy the new courts. Futsal courts are being used on a very regular basis. All weekend they were used as well. So thank you, everybody, for all your support and getting this done in an amazing amount of time. Thanks.
Well, thank you, George.
Our next speaker is Brian Lynch.
I wish we could go outside and do some jumping jacks or something, because we need to change the vibe up a little bit. But I hope you guys got your listening mode on. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. In this fifth installment of speeches, I'm going to address a situation that is a little closer to home. Then I have some ideas that I believe will lead to better behaviors from residents and staff. About a year ago, a team laying asphalt from the Works Department posted a three-day notice on lawns of homeowners near my home. Residents needed to park off-street for street maintenance. With such little time and direction, most homeowners were panicked and wondered, how do I get out of my driveway? Where do I park my extra cars? And on behalf of the neighbors, and what about garbage day? On behalf of the neighborhood, I called the city about this disruption. I received two return calls, shows they are concerned. So this team came in, did good work. They know what they're doing. To close the project, they actually never closed the project. These behaviors can be seen as disorganized, and that can lead to a form of bullying going around the city. So moving forward, here's what I'd like to see, how I'd like to see the city progress. In future projects, say hello. Five to seven days before work to be done, deliver a notice to residents affected describing what will be done, suggestions on how to deal with disruptions, et cetera. Do your good work. Say goodbye. Deliver another notice of what was done, what to expect, and how to offer feedback through social media. I find that's important these days. Secondly, I'd like to see 10% of the city department, 10% of each city department be trained in a general understanding of blight. The Works Department, 100%. In addition, two employees are to be considered professors of blight. With understanding, when a situation is to the point of affecting residents negatively, they escalate the project to get it done. They also can look at the garbage trucks leaking fluid across the city, the almost senseless use of street sweepers in certain areas, possible contracts with landscape companies for the care of park pathways four times a year, or park adopters. Getting it done. And during the Works Department budget meetings, I'll know someone will be, will be there fighting for the parks. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Brian.
Our next speaker is Carol Himmel.
Good evening. If I knew it was this air conditioning here, I'd be here even more often, especially on days like today. So even those of us who have to be here are happy. On a more serious note, this is kind of a timely question for City Council as it pertains to like your previous closed meeting. You know, I attended for a second just to see if there was anything to see. And, you know, I realized it was a lawsuit against the city by Showcase LLC for defamation for statements made by Councilwoman Moy. And I knew that because I read it in the paper in May. And I also read that there was some threatening of a lawsuit from the parolee house that's on Waterman Boulevard for statements or actions by the same council member. And I said, well, I just hired an attorney. It was about $800 an hour, and that was a Solano County attorney. And the city uses San Francisco attorneys. And I used to work and live in San Francisco. And, you know, congratulations. I'm sure you get more than $800 an hour in your firm. So I was wondering, how much is it to defend these cases? So I put in a public records request, and usually I get, you know, an answer back. When you put in a public records request, you have to be very specific. You just can't say how many lawsuits in the last 10 years. You have to say who, when, why. Otherwise, they're going to say not specific enough and no answer. So I did say, you know, were there previous cases against Councilwoman Moy? When were they and how much did it cost? I didn't ask anything about the case. I didn't ask anything about the outcome. Just how much did it cost? Because these records aren't available. You know, and I'm also aware of other incidents in the past, so I figured there would be something. Like in May, in 2020, Councilwoman Moy contacted Fox 40 and said, you know, business is opening for COVID the following Friday. And the county came right down, within two hours, sent out a nixle says, no, it isn't. A big statement the next day, so no, it isn't. You know, so these kind of statements, you know, get you in trouble. So when the answer came back in the 10 days required by the city, the city attorney's office said, we cannot provide this information. The records exist, but this is privileged information. And every question I asked was privileged information. Now, on transparent California, I can see everybody's salary down to the second-grade teacher in any city, in any, you know, anywhere in California. I can see everybody's retirement. But employee, you know, so employee compensation is not privileged. But legal costs are, and no details. The Daily Republic often prints judgment amounts. If there was a case, you know, and they say what the case is, and they say this was the judgment. It doesn't say, you know, who won or who didn't, but they say this is a judgment.
And Carol, would you conclude, please?
Yes. So my question is, I think taxpayers should see how much is spent on electric officials and top city employees. And it should be transparent. And obviously, there are some, and, you know, the city attorney's office said, we have these statutes, and it's not. But is there any way to be transparent so any citizen like me can get say, oh, you know, Mayor Price, or Mr. Carol, or anybody did something, and it costs X amount of thousands of dollars? And that's my question. I don't know if there's anything you could do, but if there is, I think people would like to know. That's it.
Thank you.
There are no records, Carol, because there were no lawsuits. And yes, I did go out and ensure that sex offenders were no longer around our children. You're darn right I did. And I do it again to protect them. And if you don't like that, that's too bad. Maybe you live in the wrong city. All right? Now, I know that you are supporting my opponent, and I know you're up here for this reason. And this is showing everybody how you guys work together. You could have called me anytime. I'm going to help you with public records, ma'am. Public records, you can go down to the, or you can go online. And you can look up in what's called Court Connect. And you can put in my name. And you will find that there have been no lawsuits since I've been a councilwoman here. People like to yak a lot, but it didn't happen. And I'm going to suggest that you suggesting those things is defamatory and libelous, because you wrote it. You need to stop. Okay? Nope, I'm just telling you, I've read what you wrote. I'm not going to put up with this. Okay? Thank you.
Bernie?
So just a point of clarification to Ms. Himmel. She has an absolute right to make a public records request. Any member of the public does. The reason the city attorney's office declined to reveal the litigation amounts is there is case law that says that revealing the amount spent on litigation while the litigation is pending puts the city at a competitive disadvantage, because if we disclose how much we're spending on litigation, it gives whoever's bringing the lawsuit a chance to see how seriously we take it, how much we're spending on defending it. So the law is very clear that while a case is pending litigation or settlement, we do not disclose the amount of litigation. After a case is settled, after there's a judgment, then that becomes public information. So that's the answer for that. But I do want to make clear that she has an absolute right to make a public records request, and we will follow the law in what we are allowed and not allowed to disclose.
Thank you. And are there any other speakers? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
So is there, is there litigation pending, Mr. City Attorney, against Councilmember Moy?
Well, it stated in the agenda for the closed session that we had tonight, there is a claim by Showcase LLC, which, under the law, is defined as threatened litigation, which is the same as pending litigation in terms of what can be disclosed to a member of the public. And then there is, item number one is against the city only. So there's nothing in the courts pending against Councilmember Moy.
So there is a-
That I'm aware of.
There is an impending claim, is what you're saying?
Yes. Under the law, there's a claim of defamation, which, under the law, is treated as potential pending litigation and therefore subject to privilege.
Okay. Because I think what Carol is saying, and this is, and I've been approached by, to be honest with you, I've been approached by other constituents, you know, and I'm sure you can understand this issue, right? Because what's happening here is that the city of Fairfield residents, these attorney's fees are coming out of the general fund. Is that right? I mean, they're being paid out of the general fund.
Correct.
Okay. So the residents are 100% on the hook for this money. Right? So they're stuck, we're stuck with the bill, and you're telling me I don't get to see what I'm paying? I mean, that is, I mean, I understand what you're saying in terms of the substantive aspect of the case, the settlement aspect of it, whatever it might be. That's, that substance, and I get that that is subject to attorney-client privilege, because that's the privilege you're flexing, right?
Yes.
Okay. So under the attorney-client privilege, that, you know, like case strategy, your statements, evidence, discovery, all that stuff, I get that in terms of attorney-client privilege. But we're paying the bill. So how do we, how do we as residents, how are we responsible for whatever the bill is? So you're telling us to just pay it blindly? I think that is patently unfair. And I cannot believe that a legal, that the attorney-client privilege would prevent the disclosure of it's $1,000.
So council-
Or it's $5,000, whatever. But no talking about the substance of the case, straight up, this is the money. I mean, that, so you're asking the residents to pay blindly without knowing how much they're being charged? That's patently unfair to me. And I mean, you probably agree with me, right? I mean, they should be able to know. I mean, we're not asking about the secrets of the case or the case law, the strategy, but we're footing the bill. Therein lies, therein lies my issue with this, with this ruling on the request for, the public records request.
So councilmember, may I respond?
Yes, sir.
So as you know, as an attorney, I am bound by the ethical and moral obligations from the state bar. I'm duty-bound to hold my client's secrets and confidentialities at my peril of losing my bar card. I cannot waive the privilege for you. I represent the city of Fairfield, and so I hold all your confidences and privileges until told otherwise. So unless I want to lose my bar card, I cannot independently make the decision to say, yeah, I don't want to listen to that one. I'm just going to give up the amount. I'm ethically bound to hold your privileges in confidence. Now, if the council decides they want to go into closed session and instruct me to waive the privilege, then I will do that.
Shall we continue with public speakers, please? Madam Clerk?
Yes, our next speaker is Kay Patrice Williams.
And as Kay Patrice comes up, yeah, I just want to say that Attorney Lim, I understand your, I understand what you're saying, but I'm not satisfied with that answer. Of course, nobody wants you to, you know, to not abide by the ethical rules. So can, so can the residents say, all right, well, fine. We don't want to pay it. Until you tell us what we're paying, we want to exercise our authority and say, we're not paying this.
Oh, thank you.
So further discussion to be had.
Yeah. We're waiting with bated breath.
Thank you. My name is Kay Patrice Williams. And good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and members of the community. First, I would like to thank Councilwoman Panduro for bringing up and honoring Dr. Fatima Hernandez. She is one of our bright lights in not only Fairfield, but Solano County. I've worked with her, with my company, my community-based organization, Empower Solano. And what I will tell you is Dr. Hernandez and that team, they are the first on the line to educate about vaccination education. But the reason why I'm here tonight is frankly because I was really hot. So I was, I was hot, and I was thinking about our seniors and our babies and our elders and our interabled. And I was thinking, what can we, what can we do? And so in what we could do, and this is informed because I've done emergency preparedness work in my, in my journeys through Empower Solano. And the one simple thing that we can all do is to be a good neighbor. And call our neighbors, call each of our neighbors and check in with them. How are they? Are you, are you getting enough water? And what this does is not only is this the right thing to do, but this also gets us engaged with our seniors. So I just spent a lot of time, I was overheated yesterday. I just was out for a few hours, overheated and didn't really feel well until 3:42 this morning. And I was like, what can we do? We could call our neighbors, call our seniors, and check in on them and make sure that they're okay. This, this weather is going to last a few more days. And it's just that simple thing that we can do, and remember to do. that we can do and remember to do. As fire season is near, we're going to have probably some city emergencies, and this is something that we should be in the habit of doing. So 52.1 minutes, and I'm buying back. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our next speaker is Josh Patton.
Hi. I was wondering, I want to see if we can help other people, like, let their mobile command channel to help people stay dry. Like, like today was like 113 degrees out. Is there any way we can come up with the money to get a mobile center with the cooling down and keep people somewhere? Oh, Mr. Mayor and Council, thanks for having me.
Go ahead.
City Manager, can we direct Josh to someone to talk to regarding this? Because he had called me earlier about this.
Yeah.
Maybe if we could talk to a staff member regarding this suggestion, so.
Yeah. If I could get maybe Chief Lukembach, if you'd want to connect with Josh here real quick and just at least swap information.
So now you can go talk to the chief? That's pretty fast action. Madam Clerk, are there other speakers?
I don't have any other speakers. I have speakers on other items, but not public comment, and there are no hands raised online.
Thank you. So now we turn to the consent calendar, please. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Is it, are we having the Housing Authority first? Okay. I should convene the Housing Authority meeting?
I'm sorry? Okay. Housing Authority, please. Madam Clerk?
Okay, the holding of a joint meeting of the City Council and Housing Authority entitles the council members to receive additional compensation of $35 for attending this joint meeting. And I'll take roll call. Commissioner Pam Bertoni. I'm taking roll call for Housing Authority. Commissioner Pam Bertoni?
Here.
Commissioner Moy?
Yeah. Councilwoman Moy?
Yes.
Commissioner Tim?
I'm here.
Commissioner Tonison?
Here.
Did I skip you, Doris? Sorry. Commissioner Pandoro?
Here.
Vice Chair Vicaro?
Here.
And Chair Price? Thank you. All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the authority or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item. And there's just the one item on consent.
Been moved. Mayor is our second, please. Seconded by Councilwoman Bertoni. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie Sinan. Thank you very much. And now we turn to new business, please.
Okay, regular consent.
Reconvene-
All matters listed on the consent calendar are to be approved with one motion unless a member of the City Council or the public requests that separate action be taken on a specific item. And this is the regular consent calendar.
Been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, Carrie Sinan. Thank you very much.
Now we move to new business, item 13, Resolution 2022-240 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, Accepting State Funds from Assembly Bill 178, Budget Act of 2022, and Authorizing an Update to the Fiscal Year 2022 to 2023 Budget. And our presenter is Anna Giles, Assistant to the City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I am very excited to be here tonight presenting this item, a resolution accepting $2.7 million of state funds as part of the trailer bill to Assembly Bill 178, the Budget Act of 2022. A little background on this topic. On April 6, 2022, Assembly Member Lori Wilson was sworn into office representing District 11, which is the district Fairfield is in, and she didn't waste a minute getting to work. The next week, she had her staff reach out to the city manager's office wanting to discuss funding opportunities for the community and the ability to bring funds back to District 11. So the city submitted a funding letter request to her office, and through her great advocacy work and support in Sacramento, the city of Fairfield was named in the trailer bill, $1.5 million for the shelter Solano Kitchen build out, sorry, $1.2 million for the shelter build out, and then 1.5, thank you, math is hard some days, 1.5 million towards the Allenwood Phase 3 and Linear Park upgrade. So these state funds are going to allow the city to expand our capacity to address quality of life services within the park system and for those experiencing homelessness here in Fairfield. And with that, I'm very honored to be joined by the Assemblywoman tonight, and I'd like to turn it over to her to say a few words.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, city manager, city attorney, city clerk, and members of the public. It is an absolute honor and privilege to be here in these council chambers representing you in the State Assembly and to be able to allocate these funds to you. The city was quick in terms of response. We sent the email out, and my staff did follow-up calls and our city manager, and everyone was just really quick in sending over the request. And so we were really happy to be able to do that. What's really important to me, and you guys know I've been a neighbor to you for the last 12 years, serving in local leadership, is giving our cities tools and resources they need to get the job done for the residents. You guys are on the front lines of improving the quality of life of the people that we are all called to serve. I have a firm belief that everyone has a right, so a high quality of life, and everyone has a right to define what it looks like for themselves, and it's our job as community leaders to facilitate that. And by putting in the request that you did for the homeless shelter, for the parks, and being able to get those funded, I know that you'll be able to improve the quality of life of the people that live right here in the city of Fairfield, as well as regionally support the rest of the county in terms of, at the homeless shelter and being able to enjoy the parks. So I thank you for the good work that you're doing, progressing your city, the vision you have to lead it, and I'm glad to be a collaborator and a partner in making sure that you can get the job done on behalf of your residents. Thank you.
And I do have one request to speak on this item.
Assemblywoman, pardon me, you're the second, Madam Clerk. Assemblywoman Wilson, thank you very much for responding to our needs and doing it in record time. So we want you to continue to represent all of us as efficiently as you do. So thank you very much.
We have one speaker. Did you want him to go now or wait?
Yeah, oh, yes. Now is fine.
Oh, okay. Brandon Worth, please.
Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, city manager. On behalf of Shelter Inc., we want to thank the work that the city of Fairfield, with Assembly Member Lori Wilson, bringing this funding that's going to be supporting the shelter at 310 Beck Avenue. We're excited that this funding is going to allow us to complete the build by purchasing the kitchen equipment, and we're excited that this will be done over the next 10 to 12 weeks. There is a supply delay that's going on with the pandemic. So thank you very much on behalf of Shelter Inc.
Thank you. Any other speakers on this item, Madam? Madam Clerk?
Not on this item.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution, please. It's been moved by Councilwoman Bertoni and seconded by Councilman Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
It is resounding unanimous. Thank vote. Thank you very much. We turn now to item 14. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
Thank you. Item 14, Resolution 2022-241 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, authorizing the city manager to execute the amended and restated Joint Exercise of Powers Agreement for the Community Action Partnership of Solano Joint Powers Agency, authorizing the appointment of city council members as the primary voting member and alternate, and authorizing the appointment of staff members as a primary member and alternate to the newly constituted Technical Advisory Committee to the Community Action Partnership of Solano Joint Powers Agency. And our presenter is Dawn Labarre, our Homeless Services Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Dawn Labarre, Homeless Services Manager in the City Manager's Office. Wow, is this a long time coming, huh? Isn't this exciting? I'm here tonight. I have one resolution with three action items that are part of that resolution. But before I get into that, I want to take just a quick step back and give you some historical context to that. So as you know, going all the way back to 1999 was when the Community Action Partnership Joint Powers Authority was formed at that time, known as the Solano Safety Net Consortium. And its intention at that time was to be a countywide consortium of all of the cities in the county and the county of Solano, with the intent of being that collaboration to oversee the safety net services for the county. So since that time, it's kind of ebbed and flowed over the last several years, and really, I think, has really started to gain momentum, probably in about 2015, under one restructure. But we've all been looking at it over time to try to figure out how we could make it better. There's been discussions many different times about changing the structure and allowing for elected officials to be in those leadership roles rather than it being staff. If you recall, we talked about that at the homeless retreat in 2021 in February. How could we take CAP Solano? How could we take our efforts here in the county and really take it to a new level? And I think everyone concluded even then that it needed the weight of the elected officials to do that. So we're really in a great place now. The two-by-two was formed in 2021, led by the city of Fairfield, and at that time, it was just the city of Vacaville and the city of Sassoon City, working with the city of Fairfield. But it grew. The momentum really grew. Vice Mayor Vicaro and Councilmember Pandoro really took the lead there and worked with those other cities, later to be joined by the city of Vallejo and the city of Benicia. And we got the county to the table, and that was really significant. How many years have we been saying we needed the county at the table? The county got to the table. The county got to the table and jumped right in. Supervisors Mitch Mashburn and Supervisor Spearing jumped in and took off running. They sure did. And then we got Dixon, and we got Rio Vista. So we've been meeting average over the last year, probably once a month. Those meetings are public. They're now called a roundtable, I guess we could call it. But the intent now is to look at CAP Solano and how we could make CAP Solano stronger, rather than reinventing something that's duplicative of that. How do we take an existing agency and now make it stronger? So like I said, you have three action items in front of you tonight in this resolution. The first one is to take the original agreement from 1999 and make amendments to that agreement that will change that structure that we've been looking to do. It does require unanimous changes from all of the jurisdictions, so all of the jurisdictions are taking it to their respective elected bodies to do that. And substantive changes include restructuring it so that the board is now elected officials. It will be a primary voting member, and it will be an alternate voting member. And then moving what is now the board, moving it, which is currently staff, moving that to what will be known as a Technical Advisory Committee. So you still have that, those experts, the SMEs, the people that work in the field, you'll still have that as an advisory level. They'll still be involved. But you'll now have that elevated level of the elected officials to really take it to a new level. So the three action items, I want to just clarify for you, and then I want to turn it over to Vice Mayor Vicaro and Councilmember Pandoro for their comments, is the resolution is asking you to adopt the changes to the original agreement. The second item is to appoint a primary and an alternate to the newly restructured Joint Powers Authority. The recommendation is for the two-by-two for Vice Mayor Vicaro and Councilmember Pandoro as the alternate, and then to appoint two members, staff members, to the newly added Technical Advisory Committee, which would be city staff. Currently, we have myself as the board representative and Selena Sanchez as the alternate. So the recommendation would be that we would be the appointees to the new advisory committee. So those are the three action items. So that's all I have, but I do want to make sure that Vice Mayor Vicaro and Councilmember Pandoro, if you wish to comment on the items, since you've been so heavily involved.
Doris, you want to go first? Okay.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, thank you, Dawn, for all the work you've done on this. And it has been a long time. I mean, I remember when we first started meeting, after I came back from Placentia and talked about their navigation center there. So this has really been a work in progress. One thing I wanted to say, whether, you know, and I appreciate, you know, the vote, the main voting person, the alternative, I know Doris and I would both agree, this is something we would do together, okay? In other words, maybe I'd say, yeah, vote is. But I would not do it without discussing it with her, because I think it's important that we work together on this, and I hope the rest of the cities do the same with their primary and alternative. I know that I rely on her when we talk about this, and I think vice versa. So I want to make that clear. And yeah, the county did step up, and they did a great job. But also, I think the other cities, you know, like this, even, you know, the smaller cities like Rio Vista and Dixon and Sassoon City, who've been there all along, you know, we made it clear that those cities would have an equal place on this committee, because I think that was one of the fears, that because they're smaller, they would not. But I think that those fears were pretty much, you know, taken away. So I want to thank you for all your work you've done. Thank you, Doris, for being a partner in there, and also all the other cities and our city staff, too, your staff, Selena, and everybody else. So thank you.
Doris? And Doris, your comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is just really exciting, just exciting for our city, exciting for our county, because it's been, it has, is, as it has been said, it's been a long time coming. And fortunately, I get to come in at the best part, when this is becoming restructured, and we actually get to move things forward. And, you know, as I showed us before, you know, I'm new to council, but I'm not new to the city. I was born and raised here, and I've seen the city grow and change and evolve. And so being able to take part in such a positive movement for the entire region is just really, really exciting. And so I just want to thank, you know, my colleagues and staff, city here and the county for all the hard work they've put in behind the scenes to get us to this point. And I'm really excited to see the things that we're going to be able to do together and really make an impact for the residents that need the help. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any speakers on this item, Madam Clerk?
There is one hand raised online. Bill, could you bring that person online?
There's Joe Joyce on Zoom.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor Price and the City Council. I do have a comment on the, on the, I guess, the new formation of a roundtable. I've been watching and attending the meetings since the formation and while running. My family's also been involved in the CAP Solano program for a long time with Ms. Labarre. The one thing that I have concern with, while you guys are reviewing this, and I'd like you to take that into account for, the structure change primarily, though, I'm concerned with, was the first recommendation was to pay the elected official. Your volunteers and your staff members that are now going to take the technical role or continue to do most of the primary functions of these services are staff members in their normal course of duty or volunteers in the community. So I thought it was quite interesting. The first intending meetings was, the primary thing was to pay the elected official a stipend. You know, it was concerning to me, and maybe that's something that you guys should discuss- amongst yourselves also. That shouldn't have been the primary focus of the new formation of the government. I understand that they are commuting, there are extra duties, but I'd like to see that that also takes some consideration in your approval process. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dawn, do you want to just say?
Well, and just some...
Can I comment on that? Okay, who, the speaker, what was the speaker's name?
The speaker was Joe Joyce.
Yeah, Joe, can you hear me? This is Rick Vaccaro. Okay. I just wanted to say, yeah, I always appreciate public comments, but I would disagree that it was the primary focus. It was not, in fact, if I don't get paid for this, I really don't care, to be honest with you. That was brought up later on. Am I right, Doris? You attended those meetings. It was definitely not a primary focus, and like I said, I'd be more than willing to donate my, whatever it is, a hundred dollars to, you know, Shelter Inc. or somewhere else. I mean, I really do not want to necessarily get paid for this. This was brought up by some people there, but definitely was not the primary focus, so just wanted to disagree.
No, there's no amount.
Well, and I just want to clarify, too, I'm sorry, Councilmember Moy, there is, at this point in time, because we are providing changes to the original Joint Powers Agreement, there's still a more in-depth governing document, and that is the bylaws. And currently, the bylaws are conflicting as far as receiving any financial benefit from serving, so that will have to be changed before there's any, any sort of financial, you know, payments for anyone, so. And there's no dollar amount set on that at this time, anyway, that those, that's when we'll, to Mr. Joyce's point, that's, that will be something that will, when the board is ready to start getting into that, that'll be something that will have to be worked out when you all start getting into the bylaws.
My question is, is there a reason why, we started off as a two-by-two, why, why was it decided that not both of the people representing Fairfield and the other cities are on that committee? What's the reason for that? I want to know why, I mean, you all have served all this time, you guys have put it together, why is it only one representative? Why not two?
Well, there is, I mean, there's one in one.
I mean, but only one voting.
Yeah, that was decided, oh, sorry. Yeah, we decided that, Dawn, do you remember why we talked about that? I think just for logistics reasons.
Yeah. From what I remember, it was just due to the size of that committee overall and running the JPA, because once you have the seven cities in the county, you know, it's, it's a lot to have two of each. It's four, it would have been 14 members. And so the discussion was to narrow it down to one plus an alternative from each agency.
Right. And I think what I, that's the reason you asked that question, Councilwoman Moy, and previous, when I said, what I said about Doris and I both, Councilwoman Pandora, I wanted to make that clear, that I would not make a decision without talking to her about it. I think that's, you know, and that could flip-flop, too, you know, in six months, she could be the permanent, I'd be the alternate or the voting. So I see us working as a team. I see what you're saying, but I think it was mostly because of the number, so.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that, and I wanted to say also that I'm really glad at where we are now. You know, it seems like common sense, but in government, sometimes we don't have common sense, and I really appreciate the work getting us here, staff's work, your work, and Doris's. It's important, I think, we, you know, we'll, you know, move forward more quickly, and I'm really happy that the county, who really has, I'm not going to call it a burden, but the gift of, you know, having most of the money to handle social services, that they're at the table, that only makes sense, too. So I'm glad it worked out, and I appreciate you guys doing that.
Any other comments, colleagues? Saying none, entertain a motion to approve. It's been moved by the vice mayor, is there a second, please? And a second by Councilwoman Moy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, thank you very much. We turn to item number 15, please, Madam Clerk.
Item 15, first reading and introduction of ordinance 2022-10 of the city council of the city of Fairfield, adding Article 10, Single Use Foodware Accessories and Standard Condiments, to Chapter 9 of the Fairfield Municipal Code.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Thank you for allowing me speak. My name is Cory Beavers, and I work for the Public Works Department. Tonight's presentation will give a brief overview of Assembly Bill 1276, better known as the Single Use Foodware Accessories and Standard Condiments Ordinance. I will briefly explain the requirements of the law for both the city and businesses, briefly describe the proposed ordinance 2022-10, and conclude with next steps. So Assembly Bill 1276 was signed into law in 2021 and prohibits food facilities and third-party delivery platforms from providing any single-use foodware accessory or standard condiment to a customer unless requested. AB 1276 expands on existing state law regarding plastic straws, AB 1884, to encourage customers to pass on taking items they do not need or want, thereby reducing the overall number of items after disposal each year. Every year in the United States, an estimated 561 billion disposable foodware items are used, resulting in 4.9 million tons of waste that are either sent to landfill or littered in our public rideaway. So the intended goal is to reduce the total number of items that are thrown or thrown away. So as described in the previous slide, AB 1276 prohibits all food from, all food facilities from providing any single-use foodware accessory or standard condiment unless requested by the consumer. AB 1276 defines single-use foodware accessories as utensils, chopsticks, condiment cups, straws, stir sticks, splash sticks, and cocktail equipment. Standard condiments are defined as relishes, spices, sauces, confections, or seasoning such as ketchup, mustard, mayonnaise, soy sauce, hot sauce, salsa, salt, pepper, sugar, and sugar substitutes. I want to reiterate that the foodware accessories and condiments shown in the previous slide are still available to consumers. However, depending on the type of business and how it serves consumers, the exact requirements of AB 1276 do vary slightly. Dining restaurants shall only provide single-use accessories to consumers upon request or from self-serve stations. Takeout restaurants shall only provide single-use accessories to consumers upon request or offer them to the consumer. Third-party delivery services such as Uber Eats or DoorDash shall provide consumers with single-use accessories when the items are chosen by the consumer via the online app they may be using. And drive-throughs shall only provide single-use accessories when they are necessary to consume the prepared food or when requested by the consumer. So simply put, consumers will now be required to ask for these items rather than outright obtaining them. So in addition to the requirements shown in the existing slide, AB 1276 mandates that jurisdictions authorize an enforcement agency to enforce the bill. As such, staff is introducing an ordinance to add Article 10 to Chapter 9 of the Fairfield Municipal Code, establishing standards related to single foodware accessories and standard condiments. This ordinance would outline the requirements for food facilities and authorize the city, through the city manager or their designee, to act as the enforcement agency. And it is anticipated that staff from the Public Works Department would be the enforcement agency should council approve the ordinance at the next city council meeting. So what's next? So kind of like I just said, so there is no action that is taken at tonight's meeting, it simply is the first reading of the ordinance. However, if approved at the next city council meeting, staff would continue to provide outreach and identifying businesses that would be impacted. Then ultimately, staff would be performing inspections at these businesses and conducting enforcement as needed. Staff anticipates that these inspections would begin at the very earliest in late 2022, but more likely in early 2023. This concludes my presentation. I am able to answer any questions that the council or the general public may have about ordinance 2022-10 or just general questions related to AB 1276.
And I do have one speaker.
You guys talked over each other. I have a question, Cory.
Go ahead.
State mandated, is there any state funds to fund what we're going to have to inspect and do?
No, I always get the fund ones where we have no state funding at all, so no. So there is a new position that has been already allocated by our Public Works Department, and this position would take on some of these responsibilities, but there is no additional funding from the state.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments, colleagues?
I think there's a public speaker.
I know. Okay.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, we have any speakers on this item?
Yes, John Takiochi.
Good evening, council, staff. Oh, I got to push a button here? Am I on? I guess. I don't usually come up and talk to you unless it's a tax matter or something like that. We were at Maverick last Thursday night, and our waitress came over and said, "Have you heard about this thing?" And I said, "What, what thing? What are you talking about?" "New state law." Oh, no, I said, "No, I hadn't heard about any new state law." She says, "They're going to take away all of this stuff, all these sugar things, the Tabasco laws, and, and we're going to have to carry all these things in our pouches. We're going to have to have a multi-packaged pouch." And I said, "You're kidding." "No." So I thought, well, you know, that sounds insane. That's, that's a, that's a problem, or a solution looking for a problem. So anyway, I read, I read the thing here, and my only comment is, who's going to enforce it? You said Public Works is going to enforce it. How do you plan to enforce this thing? You're going to go inspect every store?
Yeah, no, no. So it's not our intent or desire really to do it. We would be taking, you know, should a general citizen is called the city and let us know, but we are not taking a proactive approach of enforcing these businesses by any means.
Okay, and the city, and the state's not going to reimburse you for anything that you do anyway?
No.
Okay, that, I figured that was, I read the law, too, and it doesn't, normally, the last thing on there is the state will reimburse you for things that they enforce or force you to do. Okay? So my, my suggestion is, this thing is a state law. Let the state enforce it. You put it on the city code, you have to enforce it. Please let that sink in. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Are there any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
No, thank you.
Councilwoman Moy, please. You had a comment.
I did. This is ridiculous. And I, I did a little research, and I found that the National Geographic Society calculated that about eight million tons of plastics go into the ocean every year, straws and this stuff, point zero two five percent. So, look, I'm all about, you know, I'm a tree hugger. I'm all about, you know, saving, whatever we can save, and protecting the planet. This is enacting a police state. We're telling businesses, they're already having a difficult time, trying to come out of the COVID shutdowns, and they don't need this worry, they don't need this stress. We need our public works people doing public works. We have a lot of garbage that can be cleaned up, I mean, it goes on and on. And, you know, and then we're waiting for people to snitch that they were given a straw or some ketchup when they didn't ask for it? I mean, come on, what are we doing? This is ridiculous. So I just can't see it. And if the state mandates something, they need to pay for it, and they're not giving us any money, we, we can't afford to have a person working on this. So that's, that, those are my comments.
Any other comments, colleagues? entertain a motion then to approve? Been moved by the vice mayor, is there a second, please?
And I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just so we're clear, the motion is, because this is an ordinance, you're making a motion to waive full reading, read by title only, and introduce the ordinance for first reading and the full reading. The title is ordinance 2022-10 of the city council of the city of Fairfield, adding Article X, the Single Use Foodware Accessories and Standard Condiments to Chapter 9 of the Fairfield Municipal Code. Is that correct?
Okay.
Thanks.
We have, we have a motion, do we have a second or any other comment?
Mayor, pointing a clarification to what Councilwoman Moy said. This is state law, correct? We don't have a choice, correct? I guess probably Mr. Lim. I'm sorry, David. This is, this is state law mandated by the state. We don't have a choice to what Councilwoman Moy said.
Yeah, the bill has passed, requires all cities to enact this ordinance within a certain timeframe.
Okay. I mean, I, do I think it's foolish? Well, it's state law, so I'll second the motion, Mayor.
Seconding, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Six what? It passes, thank you very much. We turn then to our next item. Madam Clerk, if you would, please.
16. Resolution 2022-242 of the city council of the city of Fairfield, approving a funding agreement for Archway Recovery Services, Inc., for funding up to $525,000 as local matching funds for a California Department of Health Care Services Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program grant. And our presenter is our interim city manager, David Gassaway.
Before I begin, does any council member want to make a comment?
I would like to make a comment. Sorry. Thank you. So I just wanted to be on record that I do live within the 500 feet of this project, but per the law and per our conversation with city attorney, I am still within, I am still able to comment and vote on this evening's vote.
Good.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll take it away. Thank you very much. So before you is a consideration of Resolution 2022-242 to approve a funding agreement with Archway Recovery Services Incorporated. So maybe a month and a half ago or two months ago, we were approached, the city was approached by Archway about a potential funding agreement. Archway provides addiction recovery services for those suffering from substance use disorder. They currently have a couple of facilities in Fairfield, both are residential treatment homes. Their, their offices are located on Jefferson Street across from the county building. They've been around for, you know, going on 30 years now, can serve 19 clients in residential treatment and up to 130 clients in outpatient facilities. Again, that's for substance use disorders. So the reason Archway approached the city was because they received a Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program, or BHCP grant, in the amount of $14.3 million. This is part of a very broad legislation from the California Health and Human Services Department and infrastructure, where the state approved $2.2 billion to expand access to facilities across the state for behavioral health services. With Archway's award of the $14.3 million grant, they would construct a new 16,900-square-foot facility, residential treatment facility here in Fairfield, and they are out seeking assistance right now with a local match. They have a $1.2 million local match requirement in order to receive the $14.3 million in grant funds. So speaking of the facility, they would locate the facility through an agreement that Archway has entered into with Saint Stephen CME Church. They have a 1.7 acre vacant property at the southeast corner of Heath Drive and Peachtree Drive, which I've identified here on the map. The land value is considerably... identified here on the map. The land value is considered an eligible local match component. So, Archway and St. Stephen scrambled to find an appraiser that could appraise this property in short order. So, back in August, it was appraised for $675,000. If we take that $675,000 away from the $1.2 million in local match required, it leaves $525,000. About the facility, as I mentioned, it's 16,900 square feet, it's a two-story facility. It's 62 beds for detoxification, residential treatment, and outpatient services. The living amenities include kitchen, congregant dining, laundry, exercise room, bathrooms, dormitories, so on. It will also serve both men and women. Currently, there is no facility like this in Solano County that I'm aware of. The services that would include there would be conference rooms for group counseling, private counseling spaces, medical services, as well as operational offices and intake space. Currently, Archway receives funding through the California Drug Medi-Cal Program. That's how they deliver services, and they are part of the delivery system within the state and for Solano County. So, what's the ask? Well, I've sort of alluded to it. Archway is asking for $525,000 to backstop their grant. When you add that with the value of the land, it's $675,000. It totals the $1.2 million they need in order to accept $14.3 million of state grant funds to build a new facility here in Fairfield to serve Solano County. Now, they are also chatting with Solano County. In fact, I spoke with the county this morning. In a couple of weeks, they are looking to take an item for consideration of county funding as well to participate potentially in this. And the funding, the Medi-Cal, drug Medi-Cal funding that Archway and that the county receives actually goes through Partnership Health of California. So, Partnership Health of California is also considering the possibility of providing local match funds in order to close this $1.2 million gap. There, in terms of the ask, I negotiated with Archway because I, you know, in conversations with them, there were some things that we would want to ensure our protections for the city if the city council so chose in order to participate with some local match funds. And so, in exchange for any funding that the city would provide, they would allow for direct intake of homeless individuals. Certainly, one of the things that we hear with our homeless population is that there is very high incidences of drug and alcohol addiction. This type of facility would help to serve that population. As a part of their programming, they also do provide some job training and placement services for those that are exiting their programs and provide case management. They have agreed that they would do a point of return of origin. So, what that means is any clients that they would accept at this facility that are from outside of Fairfield upon termination of their services, whether successfully exiting or unsuccessfully exiting, they would then provide transportation back to the point of origin of any individuals receiving services. They'll provide 24/7 security and management onsite and/or management onsite, and that upon any violation of the terms that they would provide for the city, Archway would be required to repay any funds that the City of Fairfield provided to them on the front end. With that, that's pretty much my presentation. I can take questions. We also have Kevin Phillips, the executive director of Archway here, who can answer far more technical questions about the entire continuum of services that they provide as a part of the state program in partnership with the county. Any questions?
Councilwoman Bertoni, please.
Thank you for a great presentation, and I think this is a really great project. Fairfield, the City of Fairfield, once again is stepping up to the plate to make it happen for our homeless population and to move the needle in this area. My ask is, it sounds like the facility will be accepting homeless residents from beyond the City of Fairfield. And if that is the case, I'm wondering if there has been any consideration given to having some kind of priority system for Fairfield homeless residents, because, I mean, you know, my, you know, an issue possibly would be that, you know, folks hear about this program. It's a winning program, and people come from all over Solano County to be treated, and I understand that. But is it possible for our Fairfield residents to have some kind of a prioritized, you know, placement system so that we can make sure we're taking care of our own first?
That's certainly something we can ask about. Under the agreement, we would have basically first right of referral. So, our hit or homeless services divisions and some of the specifics of, you know, what would that intake process look like? We still need to work those things out. I wanted to bring this to you now because there, Archway is on somewhat of a time clock in order to demonstrate to the state that they have all of the local match funds. So, there would still be some time to work things out if, you know, more was desired, but we would have a first right of referral. Now, I don't know, and maybe Mr. Phillips could answer, with a 62-bed facility, at what frequency he would think or they would project that the facility would be full. It's my understanding that it's likely to be highly utilized, but unlikely to, you know, be continuously full to the point where they would have to decline clients that we would refer to them.
I have a question.
Well, hold on a second, bud.
Welcome to public comments in a minute.
Okay. I don't know, Kevin, if you want to answer, in terms of the use of the facility, do you suspect that it'll be constantly full and that there would ever be issues with the City of Fairfield being able to refer clients into service?
I think...
You need to come up to the mic.
The best and most honest answer is, I don't know. We're not going to know until it's open. Obviously, Fairfield has an endemic addiction issue, transgenerational. You all know the C as well as I do. We will process all of our referrals all the time. We never let go of anyone. And so, if we're full, it doesn't mean that a bed is denied someone. Our process now is, if someone wants to come into services and a bed is not available, they go into our outpatient program. They receive, they receive case management. We help them work on their recovery outside residential treatment. If they're not successful, then they can program into the residential treatment program. The right of first referral is something that we're serious about. We want to support Fairfield. Obviously, Vallejo has significant challenges as well, as does every city in the region. So, I don't know if we'll be at 62% capacity. My model puts us at 80% capacity, just in terms of our operational budget.
Vice Mayor Pecaro?
Yeah, just a comment, just to follow up on what Councilwoman Bertoni said. Having worked with kids, but also having worked with the parents of some of the students I had over in the county that had serious problems, and I know Archway definitely had some success stories with some of the parents that I worked with. But I agree with Councilwoman Bertoni. It'd be great to see Fairfield prioritized, because you're right, we do have a serious issue. And we've had one for years, and it's been a generational. It's, you know, it's like, you know, you talk about generational poverty, right? There's generational drug addiction, too. Generational gang violence, too. So, yeah, I'd love to see that where it is prioritized. But I think Archway's a great program. I've seen it work, so.
The promise of this particular project is that once it's established and once we're providing services, then we will be able to partner with other agencies to address the homeless challenge in a very proactive way. Our case managers and our director of facilities and development is here. We just started a new program called Archway Enterprises, which is a direct employment program so that men who are graduating from our program can be directly employed as they begin to develop the fundamental, basic skills that can lead to lifelong recovery and independent living. So, it's a comprehensive program, and we're looking for partners everywhere. We'll partner with anybody who wants to help us row the boat.
Councilman Moyer, please.
I have a couple of technical questions. I know about Archway. It's been around for a while. I don't know a lot of the very specifics. I know people who used to work there and so on. My first question is, what does your success rate look like?
That's a very difficult question. If a person stays with us, it's 100%. But when they run, they run.
Right.
And there's a lot of shame associated with relapse. And our policy is to stay in touch with people, and we have people come back two, three, four times. We never let go of anybody.
Good.
And so, if we have enough runway, our success rate is 100%.
Good.
But the truth is, it's a, it's a hard, it's a hard struggle for these men and women.
Now, so, you're going to bring people in from outside of Solano County as well?
The Partnership Health Plan of California has a seven-county network.
Okay.
And so, we are obligated by the state of California to receive clients from that network.
I see.
Now, currently, at our 19-bed facility, we don't receive a lot, two, three, over the course of a treatment period. I've, city manager and I have talked about returning clients who come from outside the region and returning back to the region. That will be our agreement with referral sources outside the region so that we don't burden city services with people who continue to struggle with substance use disorder.
Good, because that is a concern of mine. We already are the county seat, as you know, and so, we end up with a lot of folks here for a lot of different reasons, and we work with them. Now, I know you, you're very close to Sullivan School. Will you be accepting sex offenders?
Oh, we will be accepting.
I'm sorry?
Yes, yes, we will.
Okay.
Two 90s.
Yeah, two 90s. Any level of that? I mean, like, you know, third level, second, doesn't matter?
We work very closely with the men that we treat.
Yes.
And so, if there's a sex offender in the community, you want him at Archway.
Okay.
Because we've got our eyes on him.
Right.
And we're working on the fundamental issues that are driving that process in him. And so, if you come across a sex offender in this community, call me, and we'll do what we can to keep the community safe.
Awesome.
You want him with us.
Good. On your facility on Travis Boulevard, you have some sex offenders there now?
From time to time, yeah.
Yeah, okay. And so, tell me about how secure the facility is. Are they allowed to just, how does it work?
They are not allowed to just leave.
Okay.
If they leave, they're discharged immediately. If they leave against medical advice.
Oh, I see.
Okay, and when they start talking about, "I want to leave, I got to get out of here", the staff rallies around them. The more, the residents who are more advanced in their treatment rally around them, and we work hard to help them to renew their commitment and feed their motivation to stay.
Okay.
If a person does leave, then we, or wants to leave, we do what we can to help them land in a safe place and an appropriate place. So, very rarely does someone just walk out the door.
Okay, and so, during the day or the, in a 24-hour period, they have time where they are allowed to go out and grocery shop or?
No.
Nothing?
No.
I'm just wondering how that works.
No, no, no. They're programming all day long.
Okay.
And from time to time, they can earn a pass, four-hour pass.
Okay.
In which they can go out with their family. When they submit a pass to staff, they've got to put where they're going to go, what they're going to do, how they're going to get there, when they're coming back. If they're not allowed to go out by themselves, if they don't have family, then a more advanced resident will go out with them. And so, they're not allowed just to run around the community.
Great, yeah. I mean, Archway has a good reputation, and, you know, I appreciate the work that you do. It's, not only is Fairfield have the issue, but the whole world does.
It's everywhere.
Yeah, it's everywhere. So, I thank you for being patient with my questions. I, you know, I had those concerns, and I appreciate your answers.
Call anytime if you want to talk. I'm always looking for partners.
I work with people. I did a lot of case management, so, thank you.
Okay, any other council members have any other comments? Doris?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, when I first heard of the program and the project, because I do live nearby and it is in my district, I did have some concerns, but with regards to, you know, how the program works. But after speaking with you, I'm 100% okay. I think it's a great program. I think the fact that you're allowing, you know, residents from Fairfield to come in and the way that your program actually works from beginning to end, I think it's going to be a really great and positive thing for our community. So, thank you.
Do we have anybody who wants to speak? Any cards on this item?
No, not on this item.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, entertain a motion to...
Karen, can you double check? Did we have one card come in?
Sorry, it was up on here, and I didn't see it. Yes, Kay Patrice Williams would like to speak. Sorry.
Come on up.
I wanted to, well, my name is Kay Patrice Williams, and I founded a transitional home. And when I saw Archway was on the, on the list here, I had to speak up because they do such amazing work. So, the success stories that we see are, you know, personal to us. We house eight people, and we call them throughout the years when people need detox. Not only do they always accept them, but also they educate us. You make us not, they made us knowledgeable on what to expect, on what they're going to be going through, because sometimes it's hard to actually get them there. So, I don't know. I just wanted to speak up as an owner of a transitional home. These people do amazing, amazing work. Also, I was really happy to see that it's going to be at St. Stephen's. When I think of St. Stephen's, you know, it's right off of 80, and it feels like the heart of Fairfield to me. And so, when I thought of just the location and this organization, I just wanted to stick around and give you all a personal point of view. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'll go back to my original, entertain a motion to pass Resolution 2022-242 of the City Council of the City of Fairfield, approving a funding agreement for Archway Recovery Services for funding up to $525,000, has local matching funds for a California Department of Health Care Services Behavioral Health Continuum Infrastructure Program grant. I have a motion. So moved by Councilwoman Bertoni, seconded by Councilwoman Tonison. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So, we're going to go on to the next item, 17, Resolution 2022-243 of the City Council. City of Fairfield authorizing approval of Fairfield and Sassoon Transit Comprehensive Operational Analysis. And our speaker will be Diane Feinstein.
You're taking my job, Rick.
You're taking my job, Rick. He's one of my fans. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm Diane Feinstein, Transportation Manager for Fairfield and Sassoon Transit, which is better known to the community as FAST. I did want to bring to your attention that there were a couple minor formatting changes. And so there were some changes made on the website to the executive summary and recommendations today that you have received. So I just wanted to point that out upfront for anybody who had looked at it over the weekend. There were just some minor formatting changes. Transportation in the Bay Area was hugely impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic in March 2020. Staff quickly recognized the pandemic meant FAST would need to reimagine its services post-pandemic. City Council agreed and in December 2020 authorized staff to initiate its first comprehensive operational analysis called Fast Forward, which was meant to provide the city with a 10-year roadmap for local transportation services. Since December 2020, the transportation team and consulting firm Innovate Mobility have been working closely together and with the public to identify changes needed for FAST to be a high-functioning and sustainable transit network post-pandemic. In June 2021, the council held a study session with FAST staff and Innovate Mobility to discuss initial recommendations and outreach. At that time, the council provided direction to staff and Innovate Mobility to look at options to continue utilizing current contractor operator MV Transportation to implement a new mode called microtransit while still continuing to provide reduced fixed route service to areas where ridership and connections could be maximized. Consultant Raul Kumar from Innovate Mobility and I are here tonight to present the results of the city's comprehensive operational analysis that is called Fast Forward. I'm going to now turn it over to Innovate Mobility to present the analysis and outreach conducted to develop the service and fare recommendations that we're going to present tonight.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, and members of staff. Really, really excited to be here. This is about two years in the making. My name is Raul Kumar. I'm with Innovate Mobility. I feel like I'm a part of the community because of the time we've spent here. And hopefully you'll agree that some of the findings and the work in the recommendations will really benefit members of this community. I want to go briefly and talk just about our process over the last two years, what we did. And to touch on a little bit of what Diane said, with the COVID-19 pandemic, it wasn't just that transit was hit, it was devastated. Across the board, across the country, transit ridership is down 80% to 90%. So a lot of what has happened since then is to regain the trust and confidence in public transportation to invite users back. But what we've also seen is, leading up into the pandemic, the half-decade before that, and what we've seen with travel patterns changing, is that that ridership that was there may not ever come back. So we need to redesign and rethink public transportation to have it become more equitable, have it provide greater access, have it provide a better experience, but do so as it is a public service under the confines of, you know, your general funding statutes. So what we did as part of this process is really look at existing transit services. It's a bit hard because no one was riding when we were looking at it. So we actually extended the time of our analysis over the course of an entire year to understand where people are getting off, where people are getting on and off. The other thing we looked at was this idea that public transportation is traditionally a supply-side business. They put buses on the road and hope people take them. We wanted to go backwards. We want to look at, how do people move? How has that movement pattern changed since the pandemic? And I'll talk a little about that today. And then we wanted to look at how fast in the city of Fairfield compared to its peers. And we stretched our scope across the entire country to see how is transit operated in some of these other cities? What have they done since the pandemic to attract ridership, and what does that comeback look like? And finally, and probably the most important piece, is the public engagement. We conducted almost eight months of public engagement, and we'll talk a little bit about what that was and what some of the results were, to really gauge the view of the commuting ridership, the non-commuting ridership, and the general public. So to talk a little bit about the existing services, and I'll touch really quickly on this. FAST operates really four modes, or three modes. Local fixed route, the routes that you see on the road today with big buses. DART, which is also what we call the Americans with Disabilities Act Paratransit Service, and a reduced fare taxi program. These services are very common. This is a normal type of service that you see across a number of cities. And what you see up there is really that the city provides services across its entire region. What is the struggle that cities have is, how do we provide service quickly and conveniently, but do so to everybody we can find? What we found is, this is a car-oriented culture. 93% of people in the city, and you can extend that out across Solano County and across the state of California, use their car, and they use it regularly. They have multiple cars. We can't get people out of their cars completely. So how can we design services that are more convenient? How do we address those specific trips that people may say, hmm, maybe I'll look in a different mode? You know, I used to go to the restaurant, now I order Uber Eats. You know, I used to go to the grocery store and push my shopping cart down every aisle. Now I order online and I pick up. But how do we make sure we do that with taking into account people with reduced mobility, vulnerable population, et cetera? And one of the things we found is that the average journey on a FAST bus is only about three miles. So how can we do that as quickly as possible and connect people across the city to their ultimate destination? Talking about quickly, this is a sample commute, and you'll see this in the report. Folks that live in Cordelia or Green Valley, if they want to go to Travis Air Force Base, on transit, it takes about two hours to do that today, and it's three transfers. If you were to drive, it's 25 minutes. People on transit will have a longer commute. We know that, but it shouldn't be 10 times as long. How can we reduce that timeframe? And when we surveyed the population, that's what we heard back too, was that most people said that if transit was a little bit faster, it was a little more convenient, they'd take it. And actually, FAST ranked second to only BART in those comments, in this wide-reaching set of surveys that we did. So we know that if we designed a service that was more responsive, that people will come and use it. And I talked a little bit about the travel demand, and it's really hard to see. It's a bit washed out up there. But travel demand, what we did was, we looked at cellular data, GPS, and location-based data. So we didn't take into account people who don't have smartphones. And we looked at how they move today. We looked at what time of day they move. So that way, we can actually compare to what it was pre-pandemic and design services that meet those needs. And the two last pieces of what went into our design principles were to address equity. And what we have created is something called the Mobility Vulnerability Index. We take 16 pieces of the American Community Survey and Census, combine it with city demographic data, and we map out where vulnerable populations are. These are folks who may not have access to smartphones, bank accounts, the internet, vehicles. And so that way, we map out by census block, and that's why you'll see some of those are big red areas. It's the census block. But this way, we can actually understand where does the existing transit network serve, and how can we improve the service for those who are vulnerable? And the last piece is enhancing access, and this goes for really everyone. These purple dots and yellow dots are how much of the city can be accessible by transit. Most people in the United States will walk no more than a quarter mile. It was 116 degrees today. I'm not even walking a quarter mile. So how can we enhance those areas to create better connections so people can go shopping, go to school, get healthcare, et cetera? And a big part of our input process was the public. So we conducted four key pieces of public engagement, and we were able to communicate with roughly 800, 900, almost 1,000 people. One of our biggest areas of engagement was a wide-reaching phone and email marketing survey. We actually had a phone bank. People would call people in the community. You may have all gotten a call. And we would ask them a series of questions. How... What are your opinions of transit? What would it take for you to ride transit? We had 665 respondents. We had 3200 respondents for, or almost 3200 targets. I don't know what the exact response rate was of the onboard and community survey. This was online, this was on the bus. People saw it on the bus stop, so people were able to give feedback there. We had virtual community meetings, and unfortunately, because of, I think it was the Delta Wave at that time, we couldn't hold them in person. So we only had 27 participants. So Diane and her staff suggested a fourth mechanism, which is pop-up workshops. We went to where people were. So in front of the Costco in Cordelia, at the farmer's market, we actually met, and we walked through the transit system. What do you think? How can we better serve you? Where do you want to go? And so with this list with almost 900 to 1,000 respondents, we were able to develop our recommendation. And I want to talk a little bit about microtransit first. That's a big part of these recommendations. It is essentially tech-enabled transit, but it's not just for the folks who use technology. It is on-demand public transportation. So if you have a smartphone, if you can call in, you can actually reduce wait time. You can reduce travel time. It helps connect folks to existing public transit, but also helps people get in and around their areas faster. So for example, one of the areas in Cordelia, right now, there is bus service, but it runs not as frequently as people need it. So designing a microtransit service would reduce wait times from an hour down to about 20 minutes. And people can get to the Costco, people can get to the library in Cordelia. And in fact, we were able to receive a million-dollar grant from the federal government for this service because they actually saw the benefit of improving access in these communities. So the first stage of our recommendation is to introduce microtransit in the southeast of Fairfield, connecting the Hannigan Train Station, the main gate of Travis Air Force Base, and some of the areas, including that Archway project, which is incredible, would be right there in that microtransit service. So people could actually get to that quickly and conveniently, not having to transfer. And then the second service will be in the Cordelia region. That would be in February. The second phase would launch pending your approval in July, August of 2023, where we really invest back in the community, increasing services along Texas, which is a large commercial corridor. Decreasing travel time, decreasing wait time on Route 1, and then increasing some of the frequency along some of the major corridors so that way, people can actually connect across the city faster. And then introducing a whole new microtransit zone in the center of Fairfield. So if you want to go to dinner, you don't have to actually wait for the bus anymore or drive. You could simply call, pull out your smartphone, reserve a ride, go to dinner, without having to wait very long, and come back. So we really think that microtransit could revolutionize the way people travel. And it is, since it's demand-based, it's very different than traditional public transit. That idea, the barriers of having to wait, having to understand how the system works, having to make transfers, it all goes away. You can really travel around seamlessly and easily, and this is what people are used to doing today. But having that support of the traditional fixed route system still there is important. And that's the second phase of our recommendations. The last piece of our recommendation is to right-size the revenue collection of the system. So we are recommending, we did a peer review of the types of systems across the United States that implemented faster, more frequent service and had a microtransit-type service. And we are recommending, for the first time in eight years, to increase the fare by 1/4 to $2. Again, this was based on a peer analysis, but we are also recommending simplifying the fare structure, making it easier for people to walk up onto the bus and travel, reducing the number of fares that are out there. And with that, I want to turn it over to Diane to wrap up some of the notes on the fare increase.
I did want to address directly, why are we asking for fare changes? There's several different reasons. One, in California, transportation systems are required by state law to charge fares that allow for 20% of expenses to be recovered through fares. During the pandemic, these fare box standards have been suspended until June 30, 2023. However, without Solano Express commuter service anymore, FAST fare box recovery was only 8% last year. So we need to make sure FAST, when this standard begins again in July of next year, which is when we're asking for these fare changes to come about. We need to make sure FAST is still able to meet this fare standard. One thing that we really like about the microtransit service is it's going to provide expanded coverage throughout the entire city of Fairfield when it's fully implemented. Much more service capability than what we have right now. We're going to be able to group rides together to prioritize paratransit rides too, over, you know, just individual, general population rides. So there are software systems out there that allow that prioritization to occur. And that's what we would be using, would be like a smartphone app, like you do for Uber or Lyft. MTC is also developing fare integration initiatives that may, when they come into being, may limit local control over setting of fares. To prevent this, Soul Trans, Vacaville City Coach, and FAST staff are working to set their local fares at that $2 range so that Solano County can be shown in the region as having the same local fares throughout the entire county. And it just makes it easier to explain the system, potentially transfer between systems and the like. So Soul Trans is already charging $2, and as proposed, FAST and City Coach would be making this adjustment in 2023. As far as handling low-income households and addressing their needs with both fare increases and the like, MTC has already developed a program through Clipper called the Clipper Start Program. And it's where low-income households earning 200% of poverty level or less can receive a discount if they are using a Clipper card as their payment method. And in reality, we're going to be moving away from cash, paper passes and the like, and using just Clipper cards. So we're going to be encouraging people to move towards Clipper, and if they qualify, be able to use this method. So City Council has already approved FAST participation in that program, and we've been participating in that program for almost two years now. MTC is also developing and funding a pilot Clipper Access Program where regional colleges and universities would receive free rides. The students would receive free rides on local transportation. We actually do have an agreement with Solano Community College right now where the students pay a transportation fee, and they can ride free on any of the systems in Solano County. So that's a wonderful program. That model is kind of being incorporated throughout the region as well. So that is the reasoning behind why we're having the fare changes. Raul and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Public hearing is open.
Yes, I do have a speaker online and one here. Terrence Strong.
There's one person on Zoom. Please speak your name. You have to...
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. It's always a pleasure to stand in front of you guys and talk about something that I'm so passionate about. I know I have three minutes, so I'll do the best that I can. I want to let you know how supportive I am of this whole thing, right? I hear the City Council, I hear everyone talk about how transportation is a need, right? Here we are, right? And what do we want to do at the end of the day? We want to attract people to come to Fairfield. What better way to do it than say, "We have means for you to get around." We have things that are going on. We have things that are going on. Housing is number one, right? Fair housing is number one. How can people get around? By taking the bus system. Again, I'm in support of this, and Fairfield is growing. We have residents popping up, we have residential areas popping up, we have businesses popping up, and what better way to attract other people here than say, you can get around by using these services? Again, I'm here to support this. I'm here to answer any questions if you need to. But again, thank you for your time. I appreciate you. Always a pleasure to see you. Thanks. See, I did a Harriet without two minutes.
Well done. Thank you.
There's a speaker online. Bill, can you bring that person on?
There's one person on Zoom. Please speak your name, and you have three minutes.
Yes, could you state your name, please?
Hi, my name's Anna. And I have some questions for the presenters, just to kind of clarify some of the things that were presented. So I appreciate the fact there's been some consideration taken for people who may not have smartphones. I'm one of those people. So my question regarding that is if you're calling in as opposed to using the smartphone app, what information do you need to provide, and how far in advance of the desired ride can you do that? And is there any kind of cancellation process? And then kind of separate from that, I noticed on the fare schedule thing, I don't see anything about day passes, so is that something that's not going to be sold anymore? And then also, I saw there was a lot of discussion regarding integration or better connections. So if I'm coming in from Vacaville or Vallejo, and I'm coming in with a 31-day pass, you know, for inside or outside Solano County, can that be used on the microtransit or the fixed route? Or am I just going to be having to have a separate fare here just for local Fairfield transit? And then going back to the microtransit, how long, is there going to be a mechanism for anyone who's booked a ride to call back and see like, okay, what's the estimated time of arrival? How many more minutes of wait there is? Especially like I know someone earlier had mentioned, it's been pretty hot today, so I mean, just if I'm out waiting, out in the sun, I'd like to know if I've got, you know, 15 minutes, I can run in somewhere and get some shade, or if it's two minutes away, I don't want to do that because I don't want to miss the bus, or, and how many minutes would I be allowed to? How many minutes would they wait there before they just say, you didn't show up, we're leaving you behind?
I'll take the first questions and I think the last question about the wait time. I'll take the last question about the wait time. That's going to be fully customizable. The city can choose anywhere from two minutes to three minutes. And I think the important thing is, it's going to be a bit of a process just to make sure no one gets left behind in the beginning. So the software vendor that the city chooses will be able to customize it, and it'll be broad enough so that no one gets left behind or canceled within limits, right? We don't want the buses waiting there for 30, 45 minutes for someone who may not show up. So one to three minutes, four minutes, which is what it is today. The first question about the smartphone app, we want to be really clear that there's going to be multiple ways that people can actually book a ride. They can book a ride through calling, so if you don't have a smartphone, that's not a problem. They will receive messages either by SMS or by push if they have an app, or if they don't have a smartphone. They can also actually, in some systems, they'll be able to walk on the bus if the city does allow it. So there's going to be a number of ways. The really nice thing here is that if you are a paratransit customer and you go to the doctor's office and you need to get a ride back, you have to book both of those at the same time. So what if your doctor isn't available? What if your visit takes longer? With this microtransit service, you can actually just call up at the end of your appointment, and so there's no uncertainty, and they'll say, oh, the bus is eight minutes away, the bus is 12 minutes away. So it's much better and much more convenient for folks than it is today.
So are you saying that I wouldn't be allowed to kind of book in advance? I have to wait till I've realized I need a ride?
No, 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 not at all. You can book in advance as well.
And how far, like, is there a number of days or hours I'd be able to do that?
Time has expired. Thank you. Are there any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Kate Patrice Williams.
I'm back because I love transportation. The only thing we're missing tonight was small business, and I would just be in Hogs Heaven. So in transportation, I just have to say, I absolutely love and adore your presentation and the fact that you did so many surveys to really see what the community was thinking and was feeling. And so your microtransit, I think it's perfect. And so I had a few questions or comments. One was surrounding electric buses and wanting to know if you were, even though you were going down to smaller vehicles, if you were going to a completely electric fleet. And then my other question was surrounding the discounted services. And yes, that is through another agency, but I hear that there's problems with it, which is kind of a shame because that's for our low-income riders. But to actually go into the system and get those reduced fares, you have to go through a lot of barriers to do that. So I just wanted to give you that feedback again, but thank you on such a thorough work done here.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
No, thank you.
Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve the resolution, please. Woman, and during, seconded by the Vice Mayor. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. There is no other business before this body. We are adjourned until September 20. So thank you very much for being here with us this evening. Good night.